Excellent. It will be given by, stored by Commissioner Robert Austin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Austin.
Here.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Here.
Commissioner Romero.
Here.
Commissioner Lodes.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor.
Present.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Here.
Director Sorrow.
Here.
Do I have a motion and second to accept an dissent with the reading of the minutes from the last public meeting?
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We now have a presentation, Rachel Lipoff, Executive Director of American Red Cross of Southern New Jersey.
Thank you. It's on, we're good?
Yeah, you're all ready.
I have terrible allergies, so I just want to apologize in advance for all of this. Thank you for understanding. My name is Rachel Lipoff, and I'm the Executive Director of the American Red Cross for Southern New Jersey, and that includes Cumberland County, and I'm so thrilled to be here. Thank you so much for inviting me. I've been with the Red Cross for just under a year, so I do use notes when I talk still, so please pardon that. I know that we have incredible relationships with the individual municipalities here in the county. One of the things that is really important to me as I'm moving forward in this position is to create a relationship with each of you, to make sure that at the county level, you guys are aware of what we can offer, and know that not only in Blue Sky and wonderful times when we're not in the midst of disaster that you can call on me, but should something happen within the county that you know that you can call on me to let us know what you need from the Red Cross, ways we can partner, and we can move from there, because it takes all levels when disaster strikes. We also have a lot of areas of the Red Cross that a lot of people don't realize. We know, a lot of people know disaster relief and our bio myths of blood collection, so I'm going to just do an overview briefly today of some things, and I hope that afterwards, if you have some questions, either here or you can follow up with me anytime. For our disaster relief, every eight minutes, the Red Cross responds to a disaster, including home fires, apartment fires, floods, hurricanes, wildfires now, tornadoes, and more across the nation. In fact, I learned from our CEO today that this year we are on track to respond to 57,000 home fires nationally, just this year. Locally in Cumberland County, over the past two years, 26 Red Cross responders have responded 92 times to events such as single and multifamily fires, explosions, and other things of the like. We've provided financial assistance, relief supplies, health, mental health, and spiritual support, and in some cases, food and shelter as well. I want to thank all of the municipalities for continuing to call the Red Cross when disaster strikes. Even when a homeowner has a place to go after a home fire, we want to be called because we provide financial assistance regardless of that fact. We are here to provide this health and mental health relief regardless of whether they have somewhere to go that night or not. And the municipalities in this country, in this county, are so wonderful and do bring us in, and we want to continue to do that. Please continue to call us. Another piece of our disaster cycle services, we do preparedness, we do response, and we do recovery, is this preparedness piece. We have programs for kids and teens, we have programs for adults, for caregivers, for seniors. We have a Prepare with Pedro that we provide to kindergarten through second graders, which is at their level, but does talk about how to prepare for home fires, how to, you know, to, how to prepare for tornadoes, how to prepare for floods. We have programs for organizations and companies. We provide hands-only CPR, which I would be happy to provide for you sometime, and our ready waiting program that's for businesses, schools, and organizations, and helps you become prepared for disasters and other emergencies. The ready waiting, ready waiting members have access to our one-of-a-kind tools, resources, and information, evaluating and improving your ability to withstand disaster, maintain operations, and protect lives and property. And it's a free program and very easy to access. Our home fire campaign is one of our most well-known programs. We've been offering it nationally since 2014. I just found out today that since then, nationally, we've installed more than 3 million free smoke alarms in homes, and it's something that we do on a one-on-one basis. Anybody can call the American Red Cross at 1-800-RED-CROSS and ask for someone to come out and check their smoke alarms and install free ones regardless of socioeconomic status. But in Cumberland County, since 2014, since we started, we, I'm so proud, have installed 1,339 smoke alarms for free. We've made 564 homes safer, and we've served, doing that, 2,045 people in those homes. And so many lives have been saved, and we could not do that without the partnerships with municipalities, with fire departments. It's just, it's an incredible partnership to make your community safer. It's something that I'd love to explore further with you moving forward, and I hope you'll contact me about it. For our blood services, in Cumberland County, you're doing an incredible job of supporting blood donations. We, the Red Cross, provide about 40% of the nation's blood supply through whole blood, plasma, and platelets. We're also very focused on diversifying the blood supply. Individuals with sickle cell disease and other very specific diseases need donors who are like them to donate. So we're very focused on promoting drives that include Latinos, Black, and African-American donors, and that's something that if you have connections, we would love that. And we have, we've held since July 1st of 2024 through April 30th, just in Cumberland County, 95 blood drives, which is just outstanding, and we've collected 2,306 units of blood. So when you think about it, really each one of those is a life saved. There's always a great need for blood, especially when the summer approaches. Fewer people are donating in general, more car accidents, things like that, so you're looking for anybody who would like to host blood drives. We love a good battle of the badges, if you know of anybody who, you know, police and fire want to go head-to-head. I really love it when two municipalities want to take each other on, and really, you know, we could really do some things around that. So anything that you would like to do with us, we would love to partner with you. Another arm of the Red Cross that many people are not aware of is our service to armed forces. We also have an international services component that I'm happy to reach it out to you about another time. The mission of the Service to Armed Forces arm is to provide care and comfort to the members of the United States Armed Forces and their families. This starts the moment that someone joins the military, and we provide these services all the way through their veteran status, all the way until the end of their lives. The SAF team supports military families during deployments and in emergencies. They serve in military and veterans hospitals and homes. They conduct emergency communications and continuing support of our nation's veterans all the way until their service ends. Here in New Jersey, we also run a food pantry at the Joint Base McGuire-Dix Lakehurst, and it provides food and supplies to needy families on that base. And I looked up some stats today and learned that as of 2023, Cumberland County has 6,153 military veterans, and every one of these individuals and their families are eligible for services from the American Red Cross. A couple other pieces, and then I'll let you go. On average, 90 cents of every dollar that we raise at the American Red Cross goes directly to our mission and to delivering the care and the comfort to those in need. And I've worked for many nonprofit organizations in the last 24, 25 years, and that's just a staggering, staggering figure, to have everything go to the mission. We are 90% volunteer-driven. Most of the individuals who come to respond to disasters locally, regionally, and throughout the nation in the Red Cross are unpaid volunteers that just want to help. Currently, as of March 2025, our volunteers in New Jersey logged 1,000, I'm sorry, 133,901 volunteer hours, and I don't think everybody's even logged all their hours. I think that's just the people who we could get to log them. Currently, in Cumberland County, we have 28 volunteers. One thing that I'm very focused on right now is recruiting more volunteers in this county so that we have local volunteers who are able to respond to disasters like home fires quickly. We try to respond within two hours. Sometimes we have folks who are coming from other counties, so we are doing recruitment events, always happy to partner if you have anything going on in, in local districts. We have folks who are very focused on this, and we want to make sure that we have all of the people that we need to be able to serve your communities. Thank you so much for having me. I will leave my cards so that you can get in touch. Yes, thank you.
Don't leave yet.
Oh, no, great.
Okay, two things.
Yes.
One, I'd like you to look in at camera and tell people how to call to volunteer. That's the first thing, if you could do that.
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely. To volunteer with the American Red Cross, to donate blood with the American Red Cross, to give to the American Red Cross, you can go to 1-800-RED-CROSS on the phone, or www redcross.org, and it will get you there. The links are right on the main page.
So that's volunteer and donation.
Yes.
Okay, say that number one more time so they'll understand it.
1-800-RED-CROSS.
There you go.
Or redcross.org.
That's it. Did you want to?
Rachel, thank you so much for coming in. I'm glad you took us up on our invitation. We're so happy to have you here.
Thank you.
You did share some of those statistics last month.
Yes, thank you.
It was National Red Cross Month. It was something that, as Cumberland County Commissioners, we were really proud of what you did, so we really wanted you to come in and, and just kind of divulge a little bit more information about what the organization was doing nationally, but also specifically in Cumberland County, so thank you so much.
We're so grateful for your partnership. Thank you for having me. No, there's no chance I'm going to be a straight.
Madam Chair, you can continue now with the ordinances.
Ordinance 2025-2. Do I have a motion and second? That the ordinance be read on first reading by title only.
Salute.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance 2025-2. Ordinance amending and supplementing ordinance 2023-2 and 2024-4 authorizing continuation and expansion of the New Jersey County Option Hospital Fee Program for the County of Cumberland. Do I have a motion and second? The ordinance be read. Ordinance on first reading.
Salute.
Director, before we go on.
Wait, wait, before you, let me get the, the first and second, and then you can have a discussion.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Director, this, this is a major thing for the hospital, and we, we have, we have, and you've been involved with it, kind of, and I'm surprised I don't see any vote from the hospital here, if I can see someone that, that, this is an opportunity, because this is over, if I remember right, maybe I did ask the CFO, but I, I thought the number was close to $40 billion, and I was told it was even more than that to the hospital. Why are you all for that, Chris?
No, we're close.
So $40 billion, and we're going to vote against, and we vote every year, and at the same time, we, the county, we benefit, like, the $1 billion we get, that, and I want to make sure, and you understand, that we, we face a, and our townships face a kind of crisis, our emergency management service, which could point directly to the hospital causing this system by undercutting legitimate services, uh, 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 do, providing service and put, uh, put pressure on volunteers because the volunteers were, uh, don't get paid, and they were paying people a good chunk of funds to, to come so they would join the paid service from them. And now, and, and again, they're not here, but I, it, I, I, actually, this is where I would like to say, listen, we, we need to take care of this problem. One of their big things that they can't afford to run anymore, and their president's saying, listen, we can do that for nothing, and, and nobody can do anything for nothing, but now they realize or they understood that it does cost money providing that service, and now they, our townships have to pay. I'm, I'm talking to the chair, but it's really for everybody, have to pay. And so I, I really wanted to reach out to say to them, I, I would like them to commit to support, because now we got to reconstitute an EMS system down in our townships. And Milville did it on their own because they had a crisis that, that the, Inspira's EMS system was not responding, so they reconstituted their emergency management, emergency service, and now it's got to be done elsewhere, and, and our townships that don't have to wear it, although the city of Milville did the ball and did it. So I, I, and the cost is almost, for two cert, two ambulances and a crew, is a billion dollars a year. So it's too big, a million each vehicle and a crew, you don't buy a vehicle again. So I, I would like them to hear, because we're going to vote on this, and this is, and I say this to you because I know you're handling this problem, we're all handling this problem, that I would like them to kind of come up with an idea, putting money, some of this, maybe not this money, because it's dedicated to Medicare, but some money in their, their fund, that, this, this organization, it's a nonprofit, so-called nonprofit, to put in to help our townships be able to support this, and we started it for the first year in order to get it off the ground, and I'm going to rattle off names. Township is the first one. Moore's River Township. We got Fairfield, it's desperate right now. Commercial Townships, their, their EMS is on the, on the ropes because of the same pressure, I told you, they're losing people. That, a lot of the ones are getting old. Deerfield, Upper Deerfield said that within a year, two years, they're going to have an issue, they haven't paid a volunteer service. Lawrence Township says they're solid. So I just want to put it out there that I would like them to, to look and give it an idea that they have their service, well, here's where they're going to have to sacrifice a little bit to help us supply something that they, they can't, or they won't, at a cost that they said they cannot afford. We have to pick up the ball and run with it. So you're, we're going to, you put this on the table, I really don't want to vote for this tonight, and I, I'd like to hear from them.
Commissioner Albrecht. I didn't want to interrupt you. That's fine. I wanted to make sure that you got out everything you wanted to get out. We have a meeting set up. It's going to be May 22nd, correct? It's a Thursday. They're going to be there. The townships have been invited, and we've gotten good response. The Senator's going to be there, and we're going to talk very frankly, which I've already done personally to individuals from the sphere. So, that being said, everything that you said was correct, I'm not arguing with any of it, I wanted to make sure that you got out everything that you needed to get out.
I appreciate that.
Okay? Did not want to interrupt you, but I want everybody to realize, we have a meeting set up. I have been very vocal on this, making the statement that they caused the problem. There's no difference about it. Inspira caused the problem. I don't have a problem saying it. Now, we're expecting them to be part of the solution. All right, so what we're going to do is have that meeting, it's a week from Thursday, okay? And we will see how that turns out. Again, as I said, the Senator's going to be there, Mike Testa, Inspira will be there. How many townships responded?
Almost all of them.
Almost all, all the townships responded. I talked to certain mayors personally, when I was able to get ahold of them, they know exactly what's going on. We're addressing the issue. I just want everybody to understand that, this is not going to go away. It will not go away. I can assure you.
Well, Director, with that in mind, I don't know, what, what, I'll ask John, Mr. Carr, what's, is there, is there a tie frame ticket on this thing? Can we put this off?
So this is the introduction, this isn't here.
So what is, what is the final vote, two weeks from now?
No, you're, it's scheduled for June 10.
Okay.
So you got time.
That's what I'm saying, you have time.
The question I thought you were going to ask is, is it going to be a public meeting? And I don't know.
No, the, the, the meeting with Inspira is not a public meeting.
Only because you've referenced it, and so you wanted a majority of the issues.
Exactly. I just want everybody to know what's going on.
Perfect.
Okay? But that being said, we have time before the, this is only an introduction, Commissioner, so we will have the time.
That's fine, so I just like to keep it out there just in case that, that they, they'll understand how important this is. You understand that.
I acknowledge everything that you, you stated. Okay? Can we, okay, we had our.
Roll call.
Motion and second, we need roll call.
Commissioner Austin.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Notice is hereby given that ordinance 2025-2 was introduced and approved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Cumberland on first reading on May 13th, 2025. It will be further considered for final passage after a public hearing thereon at a meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to be held at the Cumberland County Administration Building, 164 West Broad Street in Bridgeton, New Jersey, on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, prevailing time at which time and place comments and objections to ordinance 2025-2 may be presented by members of the public. During the week prior to and including the date of such meeting, copies of said ordinance will be made available to the general public at no cost to shall request the same at the office of the clerk to the Board of County Commissioners, 164 West Broad Street, Bridgeton, New Jersey. Do I have a motion and second to open public comment on resolution items only?
Salute.
Circle.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public may come up, address the board. Please state your name, and, and not address, but where you're from.
Sandy Acevedo, Upper Deerfield Township. On Resolution 2025-264, we're, we're sharing legal services with South Jersey Economic Development District. Is that 550 or 575, whatever it was, going to cover his cost, and are the other counties going to contribute? What, what does this look like?
But, okay, well, we got the, the question, we'll just take that as soon as we get finished the.
And on 2025-2, what, what amendments, what are the amendments, I guess, is my question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask for the first one?
Yes, for the first question.
Sure. That is something that S J E B C wanted to do, it's a conglomeration of multiple counties, but they're doing it at a fair budget, and I'm not getting it. So I'm salary to the county, I work for the guys full-time, so hopefully we'll go to defray some of the expenses that my office expends, in other words, the legal services between the assistants and my time and Jeff's time, so that's the idea. But it's not going to anybody but Cumberland County, it's coming from the conglomeration account.
And just to be clear, I think John's being a little modest here. The reason this is coming to us is because of all the hard work that John puts in for that group, and that was their way of contributing back for his services, so thank you to John on that.
But the, the question is, did they, does it cover the time you spent, does, does it cover, like, a little of the subsidies?
The, the meetings are in the evening, so that's not time that, applies with time that you need, it's a good cost.
Yeah.
But the daytime, the contractual stuff, or the help of the resolutions, that's during the day. So, yeah, I think it.
So the time you think he spent on it.
Now, in absolute candor, when I got here, Kent Baker, my predecessor, promised me that we were all taking turns. That's been my turn since I wrote this report, five years ago. So.
You made your turn.
Yeah.
The second is, not a second, the payment is for work being done during the day, not for him showing up at night.
Right, I'm not getting it done.
And that will take care of what has to be done. That's, I hope that answers your question. Okay. Was there anybody else that would like to speak to the board on any issue?
Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry.
There was a resolution about changes.
Sorry, I apologize.
The ordinance.
My ordinance two.
Yeah, what are the changes for the hospital fee program?
Somewhere there's a red line. I'm thinking your package is over.
There is no line in line.
No. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so, looking at what was thoughtfully just changed, it may, so, the allowance for an additional outpatient fee based on the hospital net patient revenue, allowance for placing, uh, a lien in the event a hospital does not pay its fees. The county of Cumberland is saying that it seeks to expand the healthcare-related fee And that is the sum total of the changes, so minor, minor changes in the lien program to enforce payment by the hospital, not as to patients, is what.
Correct. Was that good?
Thank you.
You're all. All right, again, anyone else would like to address the board? Name a location, please.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Townships. I would just like to make clarification for our, oh, the people out in public, what we were questioning about John Carr's salary with the South Jersey Economic Development District. I don't think you made it clear what that was about, so we'll clear it up. The South Jersey Economic Development District is a district with four counties, which includes Salem, Cumberland, Atlantic, and Cape May Counties. John has been, Mr. Carr has been doing an excellent job as being the solicitor for this group, and years ago, we were taking a solicitor, a lawyer from every county and changing around the counties, and now it's been decided that Mr. Carr's done such a good job for the four counties that we're going to keep him and we're going to pay Cumberland County, and that will clarify it for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Anyone else, please? Seeing none, motion closed.
Motion closed.
Motion closed now.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any department head comments? Seeing none.
Move on to the ordinances, please.
Resolution 2025. Resolution 2025-257, resolution rejecting all bid specifications for 2024 road program, City of Milville, Cumberland County, New Jersey, bid number 25-13, and authorizing that request for bids be re-advertised. Do I have a motion and second?
Salute.
Second. Commissioner Austin.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow. Resolution 2025-258, resolution authorizing the submission of a project proposal to New Jersey Transit for New Jersey J A R C grant program. Do I have a motion and second?
Salute.
Second.
Commissioner Austin.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Forward, Director, what, what is the purpose of this grant? What are we even figuring something for? What is the purpose of my work?
I'm going to have to look that one up, because I don't know all the grants. There you go, we have an answer, we have a person that's going to be able to answer that.
Good evening, I'm Jamie Gomez from the Implement and Training Department. That's the, the match funds for the existing transportation operations.
Okay.
Those are four fixed routes that go around Cumberland County.
For the workforce.
Yes.
There you go. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Continue.
Yes, Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-259, resolution authorizing application for grant funding from the State of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety for the state fiscal year 2024-25, Mental Health and Diversion Grant Program. Do I have a motion and second?
Salute.
Second.
Commissioner Austin.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
2025-260, resolution authorizing contract agreement with the New Jersey Department of Human Services, Division of Disability Services for the fiscal year 2026 renewal of funding under the Personal Assistance Services Program. Do I have a motion and second?
Salute.
Second.
Commissioner Austin.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loods?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand?
Yes.
Director Sorrow?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-261, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing as required electrical installation and repair services for the county of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier number 181-CC, C C P S, bid number 24-42. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Ostino?
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Loods?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand?
Yes.
Director Sorrow?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-262, resolution affirming emergency to exist at the Cumberland County Department of Corrections regarding repairs to an elevator and affirming the repair thereof. Do I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino?
Yes.
Directors, Sabianos, is this additional to the other elevator repairs we made? Is this...
This is separate. The director from the jail chair could want to speak on that.
Is this...I guess you better go over there.
Yeah. This is a separate elevator, too.
Oh, it's a different elevator?
I'm pretty sure it is. It's not the same elevator. This is one that's been down for a while.
Chuck Abino, Director for Department of Corrections.
Is this the same elevator we packed not too long and we also paid to...I guess it was emergency also.
It is. It's...I believe it's the same elevator that we repaired recently, but this is a completely separate and different problem. Problem we have is the building's old, the elevators are in it, you know, they get constant use because of the layout of the jail. And we...normally I would have just brought it to you as a regular resolution, but the elevator is completely inoperable, which means we can't reach the second or third floor. So we're carrying carts and medical carts up and down.
How many elevators do we have, just one?
No, there's multiple, but this is the only one that reaches the top floor in the annex.
And our contract, our elevator contract doesn't handle, like, do you have a, like...
We have a service contract, and it...what mostly those service contracts covers is just like a little preventive maintenance and then priority service when we have an issue like this, so.
And this is, and what's for repair has nothing to do with preventive maintenance at all?
No, no, this was just a major component that went, so. The actual repair itself, we've been down now probably 10 days, and the repair itself is going to take about a week in and of itself to do, so it's kind of a significant repair.
All right, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Loods?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand?
Yes.
Director Sorrow?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-263, resolution authorizing the transfer and conveyance of property located at 2191 Fifth Street, block 6405, block 66, on the City of Bylinen Tax Map. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino?
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Loods?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand?
Yes.
Director Sorrow?
Yes.
Okay. What is the property, what are you transferring to?
Sir, this is a residential home that the prosecutor took by virtue of...
Okay, okay.
There were occupants.
Okay, that was that property we discussed one. Okay. Just wanted to verify that.
We're going to keep the occupants in the home. They had nothing to do with what the police...
I didn't recognize the address. Thank you. Yes.
Resolution 2025-264, resolution authorizing agreement between the South Jersey Economic Development District and the County of Cumberland for Cumberland County Council to provide professional legal services. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino?
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Loods?
Yes. I need the John Carr once again for the excellent job that you're doing, making us look good, so we appreciate that.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand?
Yes.
Director Sorrow?
He does it, thank you.
Resolution 2025-265, resolution declaring five metal tanks as surplus and unneeded property and authorizing the county Department of Public Works to sell it as scrap metal to a dealer within Cumberland County. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino?
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Loods?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand?
Yes.
Director Sorrow?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-266, resolution authorizing application and grant agreement with the South Jersey Transportation Planning Organization for subregional transportation planning grant. Do I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino?
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht?
All right, well, this is the question. I guess I should ask the, I'll ask the director, what is the, what is the purpose of this? What are you driving to have the South Jersey Transportation? What is the goal of this plan that you're, that's being produced?
Do you remember the one plan that was, we had a presentation on, that's what the South Jersey Transportation Organization does, they had a planning for South Jersey, which encompasses the land county, Cumberland County.
I know who they are. This is the plan, the transportation plan for the, you're out, you're doing an application for a grant.
We continue the plan.
That's the question.
Plan that they presented?
They're too extended. Keep going, working with it. The way I understand it.
With designing it?
Yes.
Or recommending it?
No, actually designing it.
Designing based on their recommendations that they presented?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so this is that portion of it, not the actual execution, but just the design and planning?
No, no, yes. That's the way I understood it.
All right, yes.
Do we have an estimate on how much it will cost to?
I don't have that. I'm not on the Transportation Board.
It does say in the packet.
Well, for it to actually, not just for the design and planning, but to actually execute all of the things in the design and some things.
Well, you can't have the cost of that until you get the actual design.
All right, I guess I'm drawing a blank here, but it's particularly, we would look, it's not Jersey Transportation Planning, whereas it does a lot of stuff, looked at the two rivers of Worsen and the Cohentzi Rivers, they look at the roads and stuff. Is there, is the extension, what are we asking them to continue to?
We're not asking, they take it upon themselves to do, look into transportation systems throughout the counties.
Yeah, but don't we direct them on what we would like to focus on?
No, it was the plan that they, that their commission put together, that they decided to.
So, well, don't we guide them to what we'd like them to look at in our county?
What they're doing is they're extending the plan that was shown to us previously. They're moving forward with it. We saw the plan.
This, maybe this is where, going back to the basics of planning, that if we don't know what we're looking for, this organization's supposed to try to take our input into account, whatever.
Well, there's meetings every month, so, and...
I don't have the privilege of sitting on the South Jersey Transportation or Planning Organization. I'm not on planning, so that's probably why I'm asking the details of what we're, because I've evaded.
Well, what I'll do is I'll get one of the chairmen to...
Who is the...
To call you on to that.
Okay. Do you, I'm sorry, maybe I should ask you if, what we even...
Well, I want to tell you, I was told that I was involved with the policies of the planning, not the planning part.
All right, the chairman, this is, this is what I asked, ask is that it's great to extend it, but should Cumberland County, I'm sure Lanning County, I'm sure Salem gives them what they would like them to look at?
Okay, the discussion is at the meeting.
If I can interject, Mr. Kuzarski may have information.
He just laughed, actually. It's all mine.
Okay. Well, I'm not at the meeting, and I'm glad you represent us, but I would be nice to at least get an idea that, or at least present to them what we're thinking, this board, because I guess you do carry back that to them, we would love to look into these areas, whatever it is.
Well, as a commissioner, you're welcome to do that as well, because what I would say to you is, what I'm the liaison to is the policy board.
Okay.
Not exactly what they're planning on doing. I, you know, I hear about what we're voting on policy-wise, and I am invited to attend the other meetings, but I don't have input on the other meetings as the liaison.
Well, it would be...
Not a voting member in some places.
Are you going to vote for it?
I'll go to the state.
Okay. Continue.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Loods?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand?
Yes.
Director Sorrow?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-267, resolution authorizing payment of bills. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino?
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Loods?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand?
Yes.
Director Sorrow? Consent agenda resolutions. 15869, resolution awarding a contract for one-stop operators to coordinate the New Jersey One-Stop Career Centers in the Cumberland, Salem, Cape May Workforce Development Area, RFP number 25-08. 15904, resolution awarding a contract for providing food services and food services management for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections, RFP number 25-10. 15925, resolution awarding contracts for providing fire alarm, sprinkler, clean agent, and kitchen suppression system inspection services and as-needed repairs at various Cumberland County buildings. Bid number 23-15, resubmission. 15927, resolution awarding a contract for providing global positioning systems, satellite-based vendor tracking services for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections. 15945, resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State contract vendor for repairs to mower used by the Cumberland County Department of Public Works. 15950, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing out-of-school youth industry-focused occupational training internship program services for Salem County and Cape May County. RFP number 24-04. 15951, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing out-of-school youth industry-focused occupational training internship program services for Salem County and Cape May County, RFP 25-04. 1592, 15952, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing in-school youth industry-focused training internship program services for Cape May County. RFP number 24-03. 15953, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing out-of-school youth industry-focused training and internship program services in Cumberland County, RFP number 24-13. 15954, resolution authorizing purchase of common vault systems, premium maintenance renewal for the Department of Information Technology. 15955, resolution authorizing purchase of one new Mitele phone system program installed training and licenses for the Cumberland County Emergency Communication Center. 15964, resolution exercising second and final option to renew contract for providing employee benefits brokerage services for medical prescription, dental, vision, and life coverage for the county of Cumberland, RFP number 23-33, resubmission. 15970, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for renewals of school mapping cloud hosted software. 15972, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing a probation enrichment and transportation program with life stills component for the Cumberland County Youth Services Advisory Council, RFP number 23-59. 15975, resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State contract vendor for renewal of Microsoft Office 365 licenses and related software and support. 1599, 15980, resolution authorizing improving participation with the State of New Jersey and the New Jersey County Prosecutor's Insurance Fraud Reimbursement Program administered by the Office of the Insurance Fraud Prosecutor. 15987, resolution authorizing award of contract to cooperative contract vendor for as-needed preventative maintenance and repair services of HVAC systems. 15989, resolution purchase of two X-Mark 60-inch zero-turn mower rear discharge underbid, E S C N J 22/23/12 for the Cumberland County Department of Public Works, contract number 65 M C E S C P S. 15991, resolution authorizing application to the New Jersey Department of Children and Families for renewal of the County Social Services Block Grant for fiscal year 2026. 15993, resolution authorizing modification number three to agreement with New Jersey Department of Transportation for additional 2021 federal road program funds for the Highway Safety Improvement Program. 15997, resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with Ocean County for housing of pre-imposed adjudicated juveniles. 1598, resolution, amending resolutions 2024-481, 2024-649, 2024-717, 2025-213, and 2025-217 for the Community Peer Recovery Center grant programs to reflect the correct grant contract period. 15999, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in accordance with NJAC 5:30-5.3 through NJAC 5:30-5.5, a workers' compensation matter of Amanda Lohm or versus County of Cumberland. 16000, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in the matter of PPA 396 contract negotiations in accordance with NJAC 5:30-5.3 through NJAC 16001, resolution authorizing assignment of grievance matters involving employees of the Cumberland County Department of Corrections. 16002, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing various medical services for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections. 16003, resolution rescinding designated 40 mile per hour speed limit for the county road 715. 16005, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for 225 gift cards to the amount of $200 for the Cumberland County Department for Division of Employment Training. 16006, resolution canceling expired contracts for May 2025 covering materials, services, and supplies. 16007, resolution authorizing purchases from state contract vendors. Do I have a motion and second to open public comment on your business?
Before you continue, I have one question. All right. This is all for next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Are we going to have, is there a monetary number on this resolution, 15997, the shared service for the juveniles? Item 22, or item 21 on it? Look at 21.
This is a shared service?
Yes, the shared service for the adjudicated juveniles. Are we going to have a number on that?
So you're going to tell you on the rate, but you don't have a total number until you have a juvenile.
Okay, but they're going to have a rate on that.
Yeah. We'll have a rate for you. I don't have it on me, but no problem.
And I have a question regarding the pre-imposed as well.
All right, hold on one second. This is not, was this, was this the one where they jumped from 250 to 750?
All the counties did that?
Yes.
Yeah, so they bill all per diem, but the rates are different.
Okay.
So when you vote for this, I'll know the rate.
Oh, okay, you don't know the rate yet.
Not.
No, no, you don't have, okay, I'm sorry.
It's somewhere.
Okay, that's no problem. I was just wondering if that was the county that did that for us, that's all.
I'll confirm.
Thank you.
Do you want me to answer that question? So, that would be fantastic.
You have the answer. Yes.
Do you want me to go?
Yeah, please, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Chuck Appino again for the Department of Corrections.
No, it is not the same county. The county that escalated significantly was Essex, not Ocean.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to verify. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And we have a very limited number of beds at Ocean, it's just four beds, so, but their rate is much lower, much lower.
And we do try to use beds that are at the lowest rate available to us.
We sure do.
Thank you, Chuck. Director.
You're welcome. Commissioner, did you want to ask a question?
I clarified what I needed to know for that one.
Okay.
But I did have another question, should we do that now?
Absolutely, no, absolutely. Before we open up the public comment, this is, you have questions on these resolutions?
I do, and really just kind of since we have the workforce development here, we have several resolutions about the programs that you're doing. I don't know if you'd like to come up and maybe clarify and explain exactly what you're doing in each of the programs.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Kristi DeLeonardo, and I'm with Workforce Development. So most of the programs that are on the agenda this evening are the renewals, so these are programs that help youth that are in and out of school, and that is to give them higher academic levels to ultimately become employable. We do have work experience training that is a part of those programs, and there's a lot of other elements that they may need, whether it's mental health assistance, whether it is psychological assistance, whether it is getting them out of a bad situation at their home. So there's a lot of different elements that are a part of the program that we offer in Cumberland, Salem, and Cape May. And not to tout Cumberland, but I have to tout my colleague, Jamie Gomez. So she has the in-school youth program here in Cumberland County, and she is knocking it, and her staff is knocking it out of the park. They have over exceeded their level of service and expectations for the youth in our county, and we're thrilled to have that partnership with Millville High School.
I know, I've directly seen it in several of our high schools, and I just kind of wanted you guys to get up and sort of shine a little bit of light on it, because there were several resolutions renewing all of them, so thank you for that.
That's great, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we can open up.
Do I have a motion in second to open public comment to your business committee?
So moved.
So moved, second. All paper.
All right, okay, we have a comment period. Again, state your name and your location.
Sandy Acevito, Upper Deerfield Township. Can you also speak to the number one resolution, ID 15869, the $100,000 for a one-stop operator?
All right, hold on, before you do that, is there any other questions you have?
We have somebody.
All right. Okay. If anybody else that'd like to speak, you have that question in your mind? Okay, high school.
Good evening, Nancy Mitchboy from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Townships. There is a live dialogue on Resolution 2025-266. This is a resolution authorizing application and grant agreement with the South Jersey Transportation Planning Organization for a subregional transportation planning grant. It says in the resolution it's for $105,000, which $84,000 would be the federal share, and $21,000 would be a county match in-kind services. Now, South Jersey Transportation Planning Organization comprises of four counties and several cities and municipalities. It's Atlantic, Cape May, Cumberland, Salem Counties, Allway Township, Atlantic City, the City of Wyomond, and there may be a couple more. And what they do is they plan things to get grant money, your federal dollars for your road programs. Most of your road program money comes from South Jersey Transportation. They work with the State of New Jersey and gets the road funding from the State of New Jersey and the federal government. I think one year, a few years ago, you've got like $7 million for road construction work. So this isn't something to shake your head at sadly, that they don't do planning, and they're not listening to you. They are doing planning, and they have a TAC meeting every month, the second Monday in the month at 10:00 a.m., and the policy board meeting is every other month where they make policy. But they do more than just transportation, what you would think of for bus services and like that. And I do understand that they are looking into, doing a study for busing in Cumberland County. So, stay informed. Thank you.
Was there anybody else? If not, Kristi, could you please come up? Thank you.
Oh, wait, do it for my class.
No, no, they just should be part of it. Say it.
My name is Kristi DeLeonardo, and I'm with Workforce Development. And Sandy, I'm going to respond to your question. So the one-stop operator is actually a, an entity that will be able to apply for a request or proposal, and it is in the law that we actually have to have a one-stop operator, not just in, you know, Cumberland, Salem, and Cape May, but actually it's throughout the country. So whoever has a workforce development area, a one-stop operator is required. And one of the major points that the one-stop operators require to do is really to coordinate those services. And in our case, it's actually in all three counties, Cumberland, Salem, and Cape May. So their main focus right now would be to gather all of the different resources that are available and to coordinate all the services with all the different partners in all three counties. They're also, one of the other opportunities they will have is to be able to leverage different funding sources so that there's no duplicating of services, and then they might be able to share, like an infrastructural agreement. They also are required to complete our memorandum of understanding with all three counties, which includes all the space that's in all of the one-stops so that we all can have that shared space, and everybody is sharing the responsibility as far as paying for that space. And they're required to go to all three counties to make sure operations, employment services, and all of the different partners that are available for the residents in those counties to make sure that they have the opportunity to be able to serve the residents of those counties. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing that there's no one else, I'm going to have a motion close.
Motion.
Second.
All paper.
All right. Before we go into closed session, this is a little bit of information that I'm going to pass on from Diana Pittman, who is our Cumberland County Department of Veterans Affairs. I wanted to let you know that this month is Military Appreciation Month. For some information on this, Congress designated May as the National Military Appreciation Month in 1999 to ensure the nation was given the chance to publicly show their appreciation for troops, past and present. It serves as a reminder of the profound contribution made by service members. The month culminates with Memorial Day, when we pause to remember those who have given their lives for our country. If you have any questions, please contact Diane Pittman. I think it's very important that we, that we mention this, have a great love for our veterans and military. Let's face it, it sounds corny, but we said freedom is not free. And that being said, we appreciate everything that the military does, who are in this country doing what we're doing, all right, because of the lives that were given to protect this country. So I just wanted to bring that forth, and I want to thank them.
If I may, if I may, Director. Following along the lines of the Veterans Affairs Committee, Diane Pittman will be hosting her quarterly meeting on Thursday afternoon of this week at 3:00 p.m. at their new office, no, in this location right here. If anyone wishes to attend, it will be the Veterans Commission quarterly meeting here at this location.
Do they have a zoo identification, like they have a...
Not at this point, I do not know of it.
We're working on all the specifics, but right now we at least start, at least Diane is starting the quarterly meetings, which is, again, say the date, please.
It's the 15th of May at 3:00 p.m. in this location.
Veterans Advisory Committee.
That's okay. Okay. That being said, clerk?
Thanks.
Oh, did you have anything else?
No, we're running to executive session.
We do have an executive session.
Okay.
And there is no anticipated action to be taken.
Could you please...
Resolution 2025-268, resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Senator Biden and Fair Open Public Training Act, NJSA 10:412. Matters relating to litigation negotiations and return of client privilege, matters relating to the employment relationship. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Aubrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Again, Rachel, thank you so much for coming, okay?
Thank you.
This has been a QBC television production in association with our partners and sponsors. QBC broadcasts on Comcast Cable Channel 22 and livestreams its programming on Facebook and YouTube. All rights reserved by Quinn Media and QBC, programming that serves the South Jersey market.